We'll call this meeting to order.
Mike. I'm sorry, Mike.
Mike, your mic. How about my mic?
Yeah, you too.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call vote.
Michael Belizia.
Here.
Vincent Cutterford.
Here.
Joseph Seibert.
Here.
Teresa DeAndrea. Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
Norman Ritchie.
Here.
Paul Hadzik.
Here.
Okay.
All right, we have the pledge allegiance to the flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now we need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from February 24th, 2025.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the meeting February 24th, 2025.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Seibert, seconded by Councilman Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is the Treasurers' report.
I have questions.
Okay.
Okay, first one is, as I was looking through this, for the month of February, the electric fund. We started out with a ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and some odd dollar balance.
Right.
Receipts were three hundred thousand, three hundred and five thousand roughly. We had a total expenses of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, and we wound up with a balance in February of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred. My calculation said there should be a balance at two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars.
No, actually, that ninety-six thousand?
Yeah.
Is a negative.
Oh, it's a negative.
That's what makes a difference.
It's not showing on here as a negative.
No, it doesn't show a negative.
Yeah, it doesn't show a negative.
No.
And it was the same way with...
That's, that's... The lead ones were all that way. But now, now we're turned to positive.
How do you have a negative balance?
Yeah.
Against what was written out as a check, even though it may not have been sent out, it's, it's still showing it. So what we do is you cut the checks, they're showing that they're copied. But they may not have been sent. But now, if you've noticed that all of them, in all our departments now, we're in a positive balance.
Are you okay with that?
Tell you what, that's confusing.
Yeah, it doesn't show a negative.
It should be showing a negative.
Well, that's the way it comes out. It doesn't show it. But you picked it up on the math.
All right, that, that explains February's monthly report then, because I was coming up with a hundred and some thousand dollar difference. Okay, the next question I have is, where does the receipts for garbage appear on here?
Utility receipts, trans first.
Okay. Hey, that's all I have.
Are you satisfied with that, your answer?
Yes.
Then you want to make a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report.
I'll second it.
Okay, made by, to approve the Treasurers' report by Councilman Ritchie, seconded by Councilman Seibert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, next is approval of bills. Are there any questions on that?
Well, I don't have any questions. Same thing every year. Snyder and Clement.
I'm starting.
Snyder and Clement.
Snyder and Clement.
Oh.
We're supposed to get copies of the audit every year.
We don't have it yet.
We've had them for eighteen years. We got two copies of the audit. So, I don't think they should be paid.
Well, the way they work is, if we don't pay this, we won't get the audit. This is for the time that they've put in to do it. They haven't completed it entirely, and this is, this is the way they, they generally work it.
I mean, you have a perfect brace to vote no. I'll do a roll call vote on the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Can I hear your second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilman Seibert, seconded by Councilman Belizia. And please roll call vote on that, Lori.
Michael Belizia.
Yes.
Joseph Seibert.
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller.
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford.
Yes.
Norman Ritchie.
No.
And Paul Hadzik.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Yeah, next will be, any other items of concern? Any residents that have anything to say could step up to the mic and...
Robert.
And state your name and... There were three minute limit, but we're lenient.
My name's Robert McLaughlin. I'm a resident on West Main Street. I'm petitioning the borough to keep Butts Street as a one-way year permanently. I'm asking the borough's attention to this as it's a safety factor. That road is not big enough to suit vehicles to go both ways. I believe you guys have a copy of the petition on your desk. I need it, Mr. Pudliner.
I also included a GIS map showing the sections he's, he's talking about from High Street down to West Main, which is right now the street that we always change in the winter. It's only one way up in the winter.
So we'll leave it that way for the year end, right? I mean, if we, you know...
That's whatever you decide. Which way did you want it?
The way that is for the winter going down. As of right now, you guys have one way going up, one way going down, which is reasonable, the way the streets are. I mean, it's also served as a school bus stop, and you have kids walking down. What happens is vehicles are racing up because you can't see at the top of the hill who's coming down, so they're trying to race up. I pointed out to a photograph to show you how wide it is. Hey, the burl truck went up the one-way road the improper way. I brought it to the borough and the police department to show to you guys, this is a safety factor. Like, you can't see what's coming down, coming up that street when you're coming down, somebody's going to get hurt. My property got damaged twice.
Sir, where do you live on the map?
Right there at the corner of Butts and Main, West Main 162.
If you were growing up West Main and you were looking up Butts, you're on the left side, correct?
Correct. Now, only the fact that it is one way now, I also implore the police department to enforce that policy. I mean, that law, actually. As of right now, you've got vehicles going the improper way up the one-way road. One day it was the burl truck. Today was another vehicle went up there the wrong way. I have a camera feature right there, I'm sure, Mr. Pudliner.
That is an arrow road. You know where he's talking about.
Yes, sir, I do. I'm just curious, if I may ask you a question, and I'm not deluding or not demeaning what you're saying, but when we talked about doing this over, was it Church Street?
Yes.
Or something, did we, were, were, did we not table that to get some input from the, of the residents that, that it would affect for direction and stuff?
That's correct.
Is it, is it feasible to, to...
Yeah.
To look into it in that way to make sure that we're not inadvertently causing some...
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Pudliner earlier about that. There's a difference. Alleyway, you can see straight, you can see vehicles coming down. You're on a downgrade, you can't see what's coming down that road until you're already going up that road. You're going to have a head-on collision. And two times my property got damaged because that almost happened and they veered into my fence to prevent collision.
Have you talked to any of your other neighbors up there?
Yes, they signed a petition.
And that they're all on board?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, maybe we could talk, talk to the police and see what they think about it as well.
Yeah, I actually went to one police officer that was doing a speech rap on Plains Road. He said he was going to look into the situation, he was going to write a report about the burl truck going up the wrong way. He said during the performance of acting or doing, it doesn't matter, you got yellow lights on your truck, if it's not blue, if it's not blue or red, and it's not red, you don't belong going up the wrong way. Especially if the road's not blocked off from the top.
Well, we could, we could look into that. What do you think, counsel? We'll just look into getting that changed, do we hear?
I would appreciate that.
It's a little different than the Church Street thing, Mike, because we don't know what's going to happen with the school, like which direction they want us to go, so...
Go ahead.
But in his case, you almost know which direction we should go.
My, my only thing, and again, I'm not, my only, my only concern is, I mean, I'm looking at the map that you provided, and I see the street in front of me, the street, and I'm not downplaying the danger of it. There's, there's a number of houses, what we call that, the rocks, like that are back there. Right, so then, and again, it is what it is, but they'd have to go up to Donegan, then make the left and go back to, you know, to go all the way around that. And as long as, sir, as long as we don't consider this, and then somebody comes in in two months and starts, you know, complaining that we cut off, anyway, we're making a hardship for them. That's, that's my only question.
Like, I have the property, my property goes all the way to the top of that hill. Like, where I see is for the safety of the fact, if I got to go around the block to come to the top of my property, that I can easily just go right up to the side of the road, why can't anybody else? I mean, it's a safety factor, it's not about comfortability.
You really don't care which way it's going?
No, it really doesn't matter, it just needs to be a one-way. And it needs to be actually enforced to where, because if people see burl trucks go up there the wrong way, they're going to think they can go up there the wrong way, and the signs right there is, they bright, do not enter.
Makes sense. Anything from you?
Nope. No, it's up to you. Orders change if you want to do it, but it's simple enough.
We're not going to do it today, right?
Well, no, no.
We're going to look into that, right?
My only question, is it easier to plow down or up?
Down.
Easier to plow going that way?
Going down.
Going down, probably easier to plow. I mean, the streets department does an awesome job plowing, going down. I don't see how you'd be able to plow going up with the plow, the way, the way that, that hill is. You'd be scraping it all the way up.
I think that's the whole purpose, that they changed to one-way down in the wintertime because it's pretty tough going up that...
Well, I spoke to the chief of police, he says also it's a safety factor that people go sliding up, which already happened to my property, and I understand that, but I think it should stay one-way permanently.
Well, the chief and sergeant could talk to Harold about it, then Harold could get back to us on it and see what they think, and we could propose it maybe the next meeting.
Yeah. I'll put it on our, our website for people to comment.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask, may I clarify one more question? So there's, there's a loop up there?
Yeah, there's a small loop.
So, just to clarify, that you're saying that you, that, that every person that's on that loop is on this position, on the petition?
No, not every person on that loop is on that petition. I would say, one, two, three, about the four houses going up on that, starting from West Main all the way up to the top of that hill where you can't see.
Did you, did you happen to approach those folks?
No, I did not. I sent, like, emails out through change.com, and I even emailed W N E P to find out how to go about petitioning the local government.
Okay. Those are the folks I'm, like, the ones that I'm really asked that would be the most affected.
Yeah, I mean, at the top of the hill, it's not a factor. You could make it a two-way at the top of the hill, it's a little bit wider up there, I mean, and you have a loop to go up your way you want to go. The fact is, you can't see up and down on that hill. And that's going to end up causing your major damage, one of these signs. Luckily, it's only been my fence twice, and it's been repaired twice, but I'm afraid a car's going to go inside my house.
What take do we switch that back to, to a...
First. I'm not opposed to it, as long as the people up there aren't going to be upset about something. That's all, just, that's all I'm asking.
I think it's perfectly worthy. I mean, if everybody's on board, I don't have a problem with it because, really, it's too narrow of the roads.
Yeah, if you want to have a two-way, you got to at least have it paved, like, lines, your lines, like where you want the one lane to be. What happens if one car goes down, one car goes up? What you're supposed to do is sit there and wait for the police to get there, decide who backs up? Because if somebody backs up and hits somebody's property, who's going to be at fault? It's going to be insurance money here. Especially if you're backing up, and another car comes down, wham, who's at fault?
All right. Thanks for the input.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Yes.
Go ahead. Just state your name and...
Sure. My name's Harry Shellhammer. I'm the commander at the American Legion over here. And I'm here tonight to thank the council and Mr. Pudliner and the mayor and everybody in the borough for continually supporting us over at the American Legion. We appreciate that very much. My purpose here tonight is to ask permission to have a parade on Memorial Day on that Monday. My, my next request is, I guess it's common that they ask for five hundred dollars. So I'm not comfortable asking for money, but why not, right? So can I have five hundred dollars too?
We're, we're out of money. And as far as the parade, you could have one today if you wanted.
Great, great. We're not ready yet, but we want to, we're, we're planning on trying to make it a real good parade. We'd like to involve the public and, and others to make, you know, to join in, including the scouts. But we'll talk about that another time later.
Do you know the route?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same route all the time?
Yep, same one.
And it's the same parade all the time?
Well, we're going to, it's not going to be the same, it's going to be better.
Oh.
We hope. That's the way, that's the attitude we have to have.
You'll have floats and things like that?
Floats and, we're going to try to get all kinds of stuff if we can.
A blimp?
A blimp? If you can drag it through the streets, that would be great. Anybody here, if you have something, you want to drive through the parade, please, by all means. If, if there's any objections to certain things, like, no politics or any social justice issues, I'm, I'm going to ask that nobody do anything like that, but any other...
I don't, I don't ride in parades.
No?
No. I'm afraid.
So that, yeah, that's the goal. Last thing I wanted to bring up is, like I say, we appreciate all the support we get, but we heard some grumblings through the membership that there's some alternative plans and ideas were asked about the building and things like that. We just would ask that in the future, going forward, you know, anything that needs to be brought up, if it would be, you know, in concerns, as it concerns the Legion, the American Legion, if it would bring it up to our leadership first, myself, and this is George Anne Hurling, she's our new auxiliary president. And it would save us a lot of trouble. But that's all I have for, for, for now. Do you have anything, George Anne?
One of the concerns that was brought to the auxiliary members was the possibility of wanting to know if we wanted to move up to Tweedle Park.
That was me. I did that.
And there was quite a few members there that day, and we do not want to do that.
No, I was told that you didn't, and I didn't push it. I just said, it was just a suggestion.
Like I said, we heard this and we're trying to find out what's, if it's yes, if it's no, is it true, is it false?
I'm telling you, it was true, because I wanted to put a McDonald's over there. And that was what I was, and I get that Tweedle Park, they were looking for officers, and I thought, well, you have a building, you have all, all the things that you need that you have over here, and I thought...
Not exactly.
Well, you, well, you don't have a park over here, but at Tweedle Park, you, you could have did rentals in the summer, and I just thought it would be feasible, but I didn't know it was going to, you know, set the alarms off. I was just, it was just an idea.
Like I said, we were just asking.
But sometimes my ideas turn into realities, and sometimes they don't. And apparently this one doesn't, and I'm okay with that.
Okay, we're fine, like I said, because, for one, it's very inconvenient. Two, in the wintertime when it's dark, I would not want to be the sergeant-at-arms going up to that building a half hour, forty-five minutes before everybody else to set things up. I would not feel safe.
Well, it was just an idea.
Well, I'm just expressing my concerns on the concern that we got.
I didn't even, I didn't even, I know you got it from Teresa.
Yes, I did, from a council member.
Because I talked to her about it, and I told her to ask you about it. And it was a simple, a simple idea, and I thought maybe that could work because Tweedle Park was in trouble. And if Tweedle Park is in trouble, do you know who takes over Tweedle Park? If they don't get it under control? This council. It's right in the deed.
But I had to bring up...
And I didn't want to see that happen, so it was being responsible as an elected official to just say, hey, maybe the Legion could go up there and, and take that over. And during the summer, you could rent the picnic tables, you could rent the shelter out, you could even make more money than you can over here. And then we could use this building, put it on tax rolls, and sell it. Because my goal is to sell everything that the borough owns as far as these properties that are just sitting out there doing nothing.
Well, as president of the auxiliary, I have to take and, I have to be concerned for my members and their welfare.
No, no, I understand. And I'm okay when somebody tells me no. I just ask...
I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just expressing our concerns.
I think, no, no, you answered my question, and that's all I ask, like, would, could that work? And the answer was, is no. And it's a big no, and I'm okay with that.
Okay, well, we just wanted a clarification, because like I said...
I'm only an elected mayor, I don't own the town. I just look for suggestions and what we could do to make things better.
And I'm only elected to look out for my members, so we're both doing their job, I assume.
Well, you probably are, I'm not sure if I am.
I have no comment on that. Thank you.
Thanks, you're a Democrat.
We're going to need a motion.
And we need a motion for the five hundred dollars.
Okay, we need a motion to allow the Legion to run their parade.
I'll make a motion, we allow them to run their parade, and hopefully all your ideas come through.
And, and the five hundred dollar donation.
And the five hundred dollar donation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion made by Councilman Seibert and seconded by Councilman Miller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, the parade's allowed, and also the five hundred dollar donation is... You could have threw me in there, that extra five hundred, you know, but...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to the birdhouses. Are you going to have birds flying in the parade? Hopefully they hatch by the time the parade comes by. So the presentation of the birdhouses, the troop leader, Jason Crowman? Okay.
How are you? I'm J.C. Crowman. Should I go to the mic?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm J.C. Crowman, I'm the leader of the Boy Scouts, the troop from Weatherly, the Cub Scouts, sorry. And they, one of their requirements was to make a birdhouse, and we would like to submit to you guys to put it, put them up at Urina Park. And we were asked if we could show up and present them. So that's why we're here.
Are they bluebird?
I believe it's a...
Can I just add, these guys are in their last year of Cub Scouts.
You want to introduce them?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
So, first is Connor Troll.
Raise your hand.
Luke Dion.
Hey.
Jack Crowman. Tucker Gilbert. Nando Posser. And Nicholas Rivera. They are our fifth graders. They have, most of them have been in Scouts since they were in first grade, so they've been doing this a while. And part of their Arrow of Light project is to do something good and give back to their community. So we voted, and all the kids, we made birdhouses a couple of years ago down in Jim Thorpe with the environmental center down there, and they really enjoyed it. So we took a vote, and they decided they wanted to do something for their hometown. So we approached you guys, and you allowed us to hang them hopefully at Urina Park. We asked for Tweedle also, but I guess you don't really have any say over Tweedle.
Not yet.
So, all six, we thought three and three, but if all six can go at Urina, that would be great, too.
Urina Park is big.
Yeah, you can hang them and forget them, they don't require any maintenance.
Do you guys want to come up and show us the birdhouses? And I have to ask you a question. Did, did you, you guys are in fifth, fifth grade?
You guys can come around them.
Did you see the fish tank in the science room? And I was going to ask if, if you did see some work. Oh, they're really nice.
Very good job, gentlemen.
Good job.
You guys put them together?
The most...
Spread them out so that everybody can be seen, because poor Nando gets buried in his back.
They're pretty neat, birdhouses. The birdhouses, could you put them over on this table?
Table by the microphone.
Over by that gentleman.
Yep.
Yep.
Come back.
Come back.
Come back one more time. Come back over here.
Photoshop.
There's one of the fish eggs.
Carrie.
And for the maintenance guys, if they, if they, every now and then, maybe once a year, you can open them up to clean them out.
Excellent.
It suggests once a year, but I haven't cleaned mine out yet. I have one in our tree, a flying squirrel living in its mouth.
What are they made of?
Whatever works.
Looks like pine.
Oh, good.
They're supposed to be for bins, but...
He asked what they're made of.
What type of wood?
Oh, this is just pine.
Okay, great.
It's just pine. Eventually they'll rot away, but... And then there's, some of them have a little spot here and a spot here to attach. Some of them just a spot on the top to attach. But if, if they open up, you should be able to, they put a screw in there. However, else you can figure out how to hang them. And then we put the, just in marker, we put the names on the bottom.
Nice, Georgia.
And then they burned, they burned the Arrow of Light in with the wood burning. And that's about it.
Are they free?
Are they what?
Free.
To the borough.
I heard...
No, really, they're free, they're donated.
We appreciate it.
We also appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. I, I did ask if the, the fish hatch in the science room.
Should we just need my email address?
Are they? My brother and I, we don't, we, we donate all that stuff. Is that your daughter? I say, is that your daughter? Yeah. All right. Is there anything else? All right. Okay, we're going to open bids for a word, paving project.
Could you just hold on one second, we're gonna get out of here right now.
Okay, thank you. You're not, you're not, you're not, you're not in our way. Bye. See ya, good luck. You're gonna have five hundred dollars.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. We need a motion to open the bids, though.
No, no, just you opening them.
Okay.
Are you ready to start?
Yep, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we have four bids for the paving. And the first one is H and K Group. And their bid price is sixty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty.
For which?
Oh, what do you mean?
They're different ones.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, here, all right, the first one, we'll do the first one. That's for North Street. And that is fifty-two thousand, four seventy-four. That's fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four. And then for Second Street is sixty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty.
Said I gave you bid sheets.
Were they supposed to have something in here that I need to check?
Uh, just a bid bond.
I did something. What's it, oh, there's the bid bond.
Right.
And they do have a bid bond. And the second one is from New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company. And their, their bid for North Street is fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And then for Second Street, it's one hundred, that's not, no, they put it, they put the total here. They put that down, they combined the two of them. I probably have to, this one would be six, sixty-two, but they put it down here, I have to check that other one. Um, for Second Street, it's sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixteen cents. So it's sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Or sixteen cents, I'm sorry, huh?
Where are they from?
They're from actually like, they're all over, but they're down in like the Lehigh Valley area, and they're up in, in reaches of this area. They bought out a big company.
New Enterprise. Who was the first one? The first one was H and K.
They were, they're down in, in the Lehigh Valley, there was a really big firm down there, and they bought the whole company. So I think they're up in Scranton, and there are other places around here, too.
And there is a bid bond. Usually, they're in the back. Check this one, make sure I hear that. Yeah, they did do theirs that way. Okay, and the next one is from Lehigh Asphalt. Okay, for North Street, the bid is fifty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. And for Second Street, it's sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents.
Harold, she's looking through their mask, a question, Vinnie just happened to ask a question, and it makes perfect sense.
Lots of problems already, I just got.
Yeah, he's here for like eight seconds. I, I might assume, or he just asked, but if you, you have to take these as a set?
No.
No?
No, they were told that we were gonna pick.
No kidding?
Yeah.
I would've thought like equipment on site, you know, unless they're not, not gonna do them at the same time.
No, they were made aware of in the bid documents that, you know, it's gonna be one or the other. That's what they were told.
All right, I'm following now.
I don't see a bid bond. You want me to keep going, or you want me to wait for him to?
Yeah.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay, all right, so the next one is from Pennsy Supply. And for North Street, the bid is sixty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents. And Second Street is seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents.
Yes, there's a bid bond here, the last two pages.
And there's a bid bond for Pennsy, there's a bid bond for, um, Lehigh also.
So we have a motion on which direction we wanna go here?
The primary street that we were looking at was Second Street.
Is there any, Harold, obviously, price is paramount, but we've never used New Enterprise previously?
No.
But we have used Lehigh Asphalt?
Yes.
And I, I think it's like a fifty-dollar difference or something, that's just a stupid, a quick guess, but somewhere around that range. Are we happy with? Should that be taken into consideration that we haven't used them previously?
No. No.
Unless you have some reason that you believe that they are not a responsible bidder. Okay. Obviously, some companies are neater, cleaner, operate nicer, you know, like make less messer, or something to that, that, you know, we end up housekeeping afterwards. Getting the Keystone cops to pay for it. Right, okay.
Now, I will say that our liquid fuels allocation is seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Now, the nice fact, you know, that this price has come in way under that allows us, one, that we have money for street sweeping, that we can pay that out of liquid fuels, and, uh, two, that we will also have some residual left for salt purchase during the next winter.
Yeah, I had a question on that, though. Uh, liquid fuels, can we build a salt, a salt shed?
We, there's only a portion of the money that's allowed of, like the seventy-eight thousand, there's only a portion of that that we can use for equipment, or something like that, and it's, it's like some low percentage, like sixteen or seventeen.
The guys are up there with the tarps covering the, the salt, you know?
Yeah, that, we could use a very small portion of it, you know, for that. Again, we'd have to get, you know, our permission and everything, but.
Can we build a new borough garage with it? Just asking.
No, it won't be enough money there for that.
We don't use the engineers, it would be.
True. The primary thing here on Second Street is that, uh, we wanted to start getting our numbered streets. It's, it is a long street on that. Uh, we do have base work that we're gonna be doing on it, you know, prior to this. And what it allows us at this price for next year to finish that street, Urana, you know, from Bladesley all the way up to East Main, and, and that's a very short piece, you know, going up.
So you wanna do Second?
That was our primary.
From Carbon to Bladesley?
Carbon to Bladesley.
And next, Pennsy, Urana.
Next year, we would be finishing that portion of, you know, Urana, and we'd pick something else, you know, relatively small that we could, you know, pull it in. Uh, I don't know, I don't have it, but they certainly came in under, you know, what we looked at for last year's number, so.
And that would, would this be done in a, in a timely enough manner to cover the, the work that the guys just did with the pipes on Second?
This work cannot start until after school lets out, and has to be completed before school goes back in. That's their timeframe on the contract.
But we wouldn't, but if, if, if we decided to do the Second Street, we wouldn't have to touch, where they just were replacing all the pipes and stuff. Do we have to do anything with that, or could we leave that to be covered?
I think he means any prep work before it's.
No, we have to cover that.
Oh.
We have to put, you know, a substantial, uh, base on it, and there is base work that has to be done on Second Street.
They'll be doing milling, too, right?
Yes, yeah. Because there's curbs on there, we always do milling when there's curbs. Otherwise, you start losing your reveal over the years.
So, do we have a motion to accept any of these bids, or reject them?
I'll make a motion, we accept the bid for Second Street from New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company.
Let me hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion has been made by Councilman Cybert, seconded by Councilman Belizia. Uh, roll call vote, Lori?
Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yes.
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia?
Yes.
Joseph Cybert?
Yes.
And Paul Hasak?
Yes. Yeah, what's next?
No bidder. We have one, two, three, four, five, take the plan, nobody bid.
Nobody bid?
No. We gave out five plans.
Okay, next would have been to award the, uh, the project for Urana Park, and we don't have any bidders.
We gave out five sets of plans, and, uh, we don't have any bidders on it. The Keystone Sports Construction, the Brenneman Company, Bill Davis Cement Contractors, W G Land, and Herbner Trucking. Nobody, nobody bid on it.
Do you have any idea why they, they may not have bid?
No, no idea. Primarily, it's, it's a lot of paving.
Right.
And, and there's concrete work in it. Uh, the only other aspect after that is the fencing. So it's not like it was an extremely complicated, you know, job.
So forgive my not knowing, but now what?
We'll go back out to bid again.
And then how long does it, how long does the bid have to be open? Like, like, you're gonna want it back out? Till the next, oh, I mean, so, okay, so it's, you're gonna put it back?
Back, yes, we're gonna put it back until, and I have to make sure that I can meet the criteria for, for the bid opening, from the time of advertising again till, till the bid opening. And I would highly recommend, if it doesn't meet the next meeting, that wherever it does fall, that we do have a special meeting for the bid opening and awarding, because it's getting into April.
Are you gonna call any of them to find out why they didn't, as I say, before you go ahead and advertise it again?
Yeah, I'm gonna call them all.
Is there a minimum number of bids we have to receive to award it?
No.
Just one? We're gonna get to that.
Yeah, we're gonna get to that.
No, sorry, jump on the jump.
All right, so with that said, uh, now we could open the bids and award for the Trail Contract, uh, eleven.
And we have one bidder.
One bidder.
Herbner.
Yeah, Herbner Trucking and Escavating, they do have a bid bond, and their bid is eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents.
Who's it from, Lori?
Herbner.
Herbner Trucking and Escavating. H E R B E N E R.
Okay.
That's it, your man one.
Is everything in order as far as the bid bond?
Yeah, the bid bond's here.
Now, the people that had taken them was R H Construction, Herbner Feaster, and Scott's Tree Service.
But only one bidder.
And do we know if that's a good bid or not?
Appears high, we're talking about some draining to work, and.
Harold, is that price kind of what you were expecting, or a little higher?
A little lower.
You're saying it's a little lower than you expected?
No, no, I, I was looking for a little.
That's, I, I, to answer, yeah, I thought you said, I thought you said it was a little higher than you, okay.
Right.
Then I'll just rebid it, reject it, and rebid.
I'd like to put that back out.
I'll make a motion to reject the bid for Contract Eleven and rebid.
Yeah, a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, gonna be good, that, right? All right. Okay, next, we're going to award the bid for Trail Feasibility.
Flip your papers around, I have it there. And what, what this was, we received the grant. We were working in conjunction with the C N R and Senator's Office, and he's.
We were working in conjunction with the C N R and Senator's Office, and Hazelton Rails to Trails. Hazelton, uh, Rails to Trails wants to connect to us. And between D C and R and the Senator's Office, they asked us to write the grant, which is a fifty-thousand-dollar grant. Uh, and that's pretty much predicated on the fact that, uh, what we did here, we had, uh, did an R F P with the engineering firms, and asked them to give us prices on doing a feasibility study. And, uh, Benish, uh, came in at fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty. Atlas, uh, came in at ninety-one thousand, one hundred and eighty, and Barry Isaac came in at fifty thousand. Now, we didn't have to put that out, it's a professional services, so we just asked for an R F P. So, and, uh, we had to write the grant, pretty much, we had to do this ahead of time, so we knew how much we were asking for on the grant. So, fifty thousand was, was the price that was the cheapest, that's pretty much what we have to, you know, accept the grant at fifty thousand, that's what the grant we wrote for, and this is what the bid came in. So, actually, we asked for the R F P first, and then looking at that, we knew what to write the grant for, so... So it's going to be Barry Isaac.
So you need a motion?
Yes.
Let me hear a motion to accept Barry Isaac.
I'm making a motion, we accept Barry Isaac for the, uh, bid for the Trail, the Trail feasibility.
Let me hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Cybert, seconded by Councilman Belizia. Roll call, roll call vote?
Vincent Cutterford?
Yes.
Michael Belizia? Norman Ritchie?
Yes.
Joseph Cybert?
Yes.
Jeffrey Miller?
Yep.
And Paul Hazzig?
No.
Harold, I have a question. How much more do you guys have to do with this trail connecting with Hazelton?
The only thing we're going to be doing is monitoring the activity with the grant, they're doing everything. And not, we're not getting involved as far as how they want to do their route or anything else, but we just monitor that they're doing it properly as per the grant. So we're not...
Time consuming or not?
Huh?
Time consuming or not?
Minimal. That's why they have to take care of it, you know what I mean?
You're writing the grant through D C and R, right?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Let's move on to the key lockbox ordinance. Want to explain that?
Sure.
Because I don't understand it.
Well...
I, I, I think we bought a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar fire truck, and if it doesn't have a ramrod on it to knock a door down through the fire in the house, I don't think we need lockboxes, but go ahead and explain it.
Well, at the last meeting, it was, uh, in regards to the pricing of it, and after speaking with Tom, um, he had severed, said that the fire company will cover all the costs for the equipment needed by the fire department, uh, the only thing the borough will have to pay for is the advertising of this ordinance, that's it.
All right, do you have a... Do we have a motion to advertise for the ordinance for the key lockbox? And, uh, I think the cost was like five hundred and some dollars, correct?
It varied. My, do you know where...
There was a variation, but a lot of places, they don't have to buy the commercial, they just have to buy the residential lockbox. So that's cheaper just by that, but they'll have to buy a specific...
Why, why do we really need these lockboxes? In fifty years, we don't have them. When I was fire chief, we didn't have lockboxes, and we had many businesses. Now we hardly have any business, and now we're, we're going to put an expense out there to people to buy these lockboxes, like, is it because we want to be like Hazelton? Because this is not Hazelton.
No, no, we want to be like Hazelton, we just want to be able to access the building without having to wait for key holders, or if we don't get a key holder, and there actually is something, we don't have to destroy the building to get in, we could use a doorway, instead of making a doorway.
But we, you, you do have access in the fire department to take a door down and get into a building.
But if there's no reason to take the door down, and you could simply have the key and not do damage to their property, that's what we're looking at.
Benny, how many places did you guys roughly think it would need boxes for? Did you come up with...
From what I'm talking to Tom, um, it would be commercial places, uh, apartments, I think he was saying something like, for example, if you, if you had a, a double, and you rented both out, no. But it would be like a building that had, say, like, three, like, say, the one that's down from here. Oh, well, yeah, the brick building, well, the insurance place, if that goes into apartments, you know what I mean, if there's a main access, and that, yeah, then yes. Something like that would, he was saying like three or more. The new, the new stuff at the school, stuff like that.
Do you guys have a rough idea what it's going to cost you?
Uh, I think it was like, I thought it was like twelve hundred a set for us, depending on, per truck.
Yeah.
So depending on how many trucks we want to put, the actual lockbox, and again, that's for the good one that would have our code, that you knew I took the key out, as opposed to, you know, just anybody getting it.
Are you looking for the businesses to be required, to have these, or optional?
Um, for the ordinance to be required, and people with residence could, anybody could opt in if they wanted, I know my stepdad was talking about doing it just because of the way his place is set up. So, to be able to access it. So, I mean, be required.
I guess it has its good and bad points, you don't have any damage, you could get in right away, you know? And a lot of these places probably have these steel doors and stuff, which it's, that's a little bit more of a hus, uh, a hassle to get in, or no?
We have the equipment to do it, but that's an expensive door.
Yeah.
So... For lots of it.
There's no way other people could break into that lockbox and get the key?
I mean, I would assume it's, it's set up that you'd have to physically. I've never seen a test, I wanted to see if it was breakable or not, but...
No, I'm just saying, if a resident bought, or they buy it, you know, is it safe to have the key there? You know what I'm saying, that's all.
I mean, if a resident want, you know, wanted to do it, I mean, I don't... I mean, I personally wouldn't, I don't, you know? But I, I don't know, I don't know how durable they are, I didn't, you know, look into the equipment, you're looking at that brand. Probably one's more durable than the other, I would assume, the more you pay.
And we're looking like more than three apartments, uh, were you looking at?
I think that's what was in the, the ordinance, yeah, because like I said, a, a double, like a double house, if you owned it, you were renting it, no, it's two separate. But it'd be something, I think, that has like a main, like an entranceway that you would have to access different, different areas.
And you said every, whatever fire trucks you want are going to have the lockboxes on them, with a key in them?
Goal is four, like, you know, of course, that's a big expense for the fire companies, so we might roll out two, and then wait a year, do two more.
Did you approach the businesses and see their feelings, colleagues?
No. I'm personally a part of this, as counsel, I wasn't part of this, you know what I mean?
So, none, none, most of the businesses have no idea we want to do this?
That's correct, because that's what I heard.
I personally was not part of that, so I don't know who, who was spoke to.
I mean, I'm all for it, most of the part, I like the idea, I'd like to notify the, uh, businesses and stuff, we're going to do it before we do it. I mean, I, I think it's a, that's a good idea, gets you into the property, minimal damage, I mean, if you have a fire, it's maybe contained on the stove or something simple, instead of, you know, having to put new doors and jams and everything in.
Just leave your front door open like I do. Just walk in.
Yeah.
You could, I don't give a, break my windows, I have insurance. Doesn't matter to me, but, anyway, well, what do you think, we should table this and, and talk to the businesses, or what's your suggestion?
Well, since we're not really going anywhere rapid here, why don't we do that, I mean...
Or should we tell the, the solicitor to write up the ordinance and vote on it, whatever? We have to move along with this. I'm more interested in the tax collector's request to destroy records.
Okay.
Because she can destroy my records.
I don't know, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we let these guys talk to the businesses, and then we'll table it and deal with it at the next meeting.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Cybert, seconded by Councilman Ritchie, that we tabled the, the lockbox ordinance. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. And next on the agenda is the tax collector request to destroy records, and I guess that's the retention...
Yes, right.
Uh, after so long, they could destroy, uh, records.
And should have laid them out.
Yeah. Am I on there?
Yeah.
All right.
How do they destroy them? They shred them?
Yes.
She takes them much, I'm just...
Yeah, they, uh, they shred them.
And that's a resolution that we have to, you have to pass.
So we need a motion, uh, to have the tax collector uh, her request to destroy records, I know that don't sound right, but we do need a, an order, a motion.
I'll make a motion for the tax collector to destroy our records, tax records.
Except yours.
Yeah, you second, except mine. Yeah. Destroy a lot more than the tax records. Okay, so the motion been made by Councilman Cybert, seconded by Councilman Miller, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, then you can tell the tax collector, that's, we're going to do a resolution for that, right?
Yes.
All right. And next on the agenda is the electric reconnection and inspection requirements discussion. I think we discussed it last meeting, that before someone new moves in...
Right.
We have to inspect the...
Yes, and there are other criteria, if, you know, if a meter's been out for a long, a year period or something like that, that it requires an inspection on some property, even storm damage or whatever.
Is there any other discussion with that? I think we basically discussed most of it at the last meeting. So anybody have any questions on it? So I guess that was our discussion. And next will be a resolution for price change on the electric.
Well, wait up there.
Wait a minute, we need to...
Okay, hang on.
What do you want to do with the ordinance, you can, you advertise it or pass it?
We have the ordinance.
I thought we did that already.
We didn't advertise it yet.
No.
No, that's what I'm saying, the next step would be to advertise it, council, which is the...
Okay, so we need a motion to advertise the ordinance, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
A motion been made by Councilman Belizia and seconded by Councilman Cybert, that we advertise, uh, for the uh, reconnection inspection requirements discussion, or not discussion.
Ordinance?
The ordinance. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it, so are you going to move on with that?
Yep.
Okay. And next will be a resolution for price change in electric, and just to mention something about that, this is a nationwide deal. It's not just weatherly, raising electric rates, uh, if you look, watch on the news, uh, it's a real big, uh, issue, and I mentioned it before. They shut down Montour and Martins Creek coal plants, and, uh, as a result, uh, we're getting all kinds of increases, uh, across the country, not just from those two plants, but now we send all of our coal to China, so, um...
Excuse me, that was Norm's recommendation last month, I didn't think I missed this one.
What's that?
Just, just, it was just that.
Eight dollars and ninety-one cents?
Yeah, bet it was missed on the, on the, yep.
Okay, so, why do we need a resolution for eight dollars and ninety-one cents?
We have to...
Because you all, every time you change your fee, it can be done by resolution, so yes, you need a resolution to change the, what you charge, whether, whatever utility it is.
Okay, all right. So, uh, we need a, uh, a motion to, for a resolution for a price change in the electric.
Uh, one thing, Harold, the ordinance still robbing here.
Which wording?
Line four.
Oh, I see it, yeah, we'll make that change. Yeah, we'll make it, no biggie.
So did you want to make a, a motion, Norm?
Just make the motion with the change, and the verge, that's all.
Yeah. Make a motion to accept the resolution with changes.
Let me hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Ritchie, seconded by Councilman Cybert, all those in favor say aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, ayes have it. The next on the list is to approve items for sale on municipal.
Just the one pickup truck, our dream.
So we need a motion to approve the item.
Harold, what about that, uh, Ford pickup truck that's been sitting back there for probably two years?
I have to go look at it.
The gold one?
That, I have to look at that one, the gold pickup? Yeah, we'll have to look at that one. This one came in on a impound and as a matter of fact, if you look at the mileage on it, on this one, we'll look into the gold one, Norm. It's two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand miles on it.
I think please use that, Norm. Don't they, Sarge?
Just drove the last week here.
Okay.
So, anyway, we need a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion, we approve areas for sale on municipal.
You're a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, motion been made by Councilman Cybert, seconded by Councilman Ritchie, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. And, uh, next we'll have a discussion on the non-uniform pension plan, uh, in executive session. And I see that we have two, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I, I would like to, I'd like to say, do I have an opportunity to speak on, on two subjects, the electric and something else?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, I, I, I'm sure I can speak for myself, but for the whole council, that I am getting blasted about the electric, like, pretty regularly. Um, and we live a pretty protected life here, most of the people do in weather, they really, really do. In Tamaco, we have the ability to shop for our provide, or, or we don't, don't hear, but in Tamaco, we do, and we shop really hard for it. Even the shop price, and apples to apples, which, for some reason, people focus on certain numbers or certain figures without taking the whole picture into account. Weatherly's meter rate is, what is it, seven fifty, did you come on, eight fifty?
Well, we just changed it to eight ninety-one.
Oh, Tamaco's eight ninety-one, Tamaco's is like seventy dollars. Okay, so if you have a garage that you don't ever use, your monthly bill is seventy bucks. But at the end of the day, if you take, every town's charges seem to hold a different number. At the end of the day, if you take the toll you're paying for electric, and you divide it by your usage, you will look and see what that number is, if it's a, if it's six... If it's a, if it's sixteen cents, fourteen cents, seventeen cents, that's the true, true number. Weatherly's number was lower than Tamaco's when we, when you do that math. Weatherly went up fifteen percent, PPL went nineteen percent. I don't think it takes a genius to do the math. They went up five more percent than us, and people, for whatever reason, I don't know why, but they're, they're angry that, that we're doing this. We are not, we are not doing this. It's not us. And as a matter of fact, we're behind the times as we always are on things that we charge. But I can't, I can't, I can't go almost anywhere and somebody's grabbing me about electric.
Because you're, because you're here and PPL's not, and they can yell at you, but they, other towns can't yell at PPL. They can yell at you.
I get it.
But that's true. That is the reason.
But, but the fact is that it's, it's because you have nothing to compare it to, so people don't, they just don't know.
I told a utility bill one hundred thousand dollars and change last month. That's, I don't think that's bad. I mean, if you just, I live by myself and you watch a little bit, you're not home, you don't leave every, it's just, I don't think it was bad. And that little bit of money we're getting for the water, that was long over there.
And we're still behind. Tamaco's is, again, I, I can compare Tamaco's because I get, I get the fees, I get the bills. We pay it there. I know we're paying. And, but I didn't compare before it comes up that we're commercial. I actually have a person bring me the bills that lives in Tamaco that's residential, just to make sure that it's apples. And, and again, they're like sixty dollars. Like, we are behind on all of this stuff, on all of the fronts. But just, nobody likes it. Nobody likes six dollar eggs, but everybody's buying six dollar eggs. It's just, you can't. What are, what's the alternative? Turn the power off.
Or you could raise eight chickens instead of four.
Teresa's not here. That, that's all I want to say on that subject, because I know everybody's getting beat up on it, but, um, I do have one other, one other side thing that I just want to mention and get it off my chest. And, and I don't think that we realize and we don't appreciate, um, a lot of the stuff that happens in town, and we take a lot of stuff for granted. I don't know that anybody knows this. We don't have an ambulance that can street, but Officer Cooper was on two back-to-back cardiac calls the other day, two. He nosed him and got done with one and had to go to another. And Officer Ira went to a choking, a lady that was choked, uh, and was able to help her out, so, um, people are helping, that, that there are things going on and there are people that we need to appreciate for what they're doing.
I seen Cooper, well, at my neighbor's house last week. She thought she had a stroke, and he came in and up, hey, took charge. Very professional, did a great job.
I happened to run into him that night when he's got off his shift, and I'm telling you, he looked warm. Like, he was, he was, he was, he was beat down, so I just wanted to say thank you, I guess, and, and people can say anything they want until it's their, their wife or their husband that's laying on the floor, and then, then it's, then it's a big deal.
I got one, I got one thing. I'm sorry. Are you done?
I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, at the last meeting, I talked about doing a shuttle service for the hill climb. Uh, I'd like to be able to use the trailhead and out here, and if we need to park for an overflow. So it's up to you guys, because we get, we have parking issues on that side of town. And, uh, I'm not sure if we're going to make North Street one way or if we're going to completely make it no parking. But I, I do know Saturday and Sunday afternoon, if you guys had to get a truck up there, it'd be kind of exciting, you know? Harold and I have been talking about this for years now, so I, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to try it. They don't have the big screen TV down there. They're promoting that, so I don't know how many extra people, you know, people actually want to stand here and watch the cars go up to the top. But, uh, you know, I don't want to do anything and all of a sudden we have a total cluster. You know, maybe we'll do it. It's not necessary. I really don't know, you know? That's all I got.
All right.
Yes, no? What do you say?
You need a motion to do that?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I, I vote whatever you need for parking, use the park.
We should have a motion.
Make a motion or let's go.
Make a motion to let the hill climb use the park parking lot as overflow and the trailhead.
That'd be the overflow, and we start using the two down here, this lot and the one over there.
And the two lots down in the center of town.
Provide, they should provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as an additional insured, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll have it on.
And you donate the five hundred dollars.
We'll have it on the SCCA binder.
Okay. And you donate the five hundred dollars we just gave up for the program.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Lizzie, seconded by Councilman Ritchie. All those in favor, say aye. The, uh, uh, burial property can be used by, uh, the, um, hill climb, as far, as long as the insurance is provided. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
And, uh, last thing is discussion on non-uniform pension plan in executive session. I would just like to make one request. If anybody here objects to it, I'd like the two borough employees to stay in the, in the room while we discuss it. Because it's going to be your pension plan, not ours. Do we have a problem with that? Because if we do, then Harold and Laurie should leave as well. That's what I was told by a, a good source.
Okay. Really, unless it, if you're talking, does it particularly pertain to those two employees?
Uh, to all, all of them, but they're the ones who are going to learn by it.
Okay, I know we're not in executive session yet, but I thought this only pertain, the changes we're talking to, I thought only pertain to two employees.
Well, there's, there's five different, no, it's going to pertain to all the non-uniform employees. Go ahead.
It does, but, uh, there are only certain aspects in this. What we're doing is, uh, the way it was, that our pension plan previously, as you know, or may or not know, it was through the PSAB and they had, it hasn't been updated, you know, since that point.
Is that, are we going to be talking about our existing plan?
Yes, you're talking about an existing plan.
I thought we were going to try and change it.
Well.
Like we did the five studies.
Right. You had five studies done, but this is just doing the bones of it, getting the plan updated.
Okay.
This is what, this is what Mockenhop wanted us to do, is to just get the plan up to date. It hasn't been.
Well, do we have to make a motion on it, or could you just sit down with, maybe on a conference call with the attorney and have the employees come in and discuss it with them, because it's going to affect them, not council? And it's going to affect you and Laurie.
Right, but it, right now, what we have to do is council has to accept this. There's, there's nothing in it in regards to what you guys are looking for or changes in that.
Well, they're not looking for anything. I, I just wanted to do a study that they have options.
Right, and this is the basic plan just being brought up to normal, to where it should be, based on our, uh, Mockenhop, okay? It's not any changes in regards to that.
I mean, you have everything set up for the MMO, like how.
Yeah.
It, it, you were talking about, you're going to flatline it for four years or something?
Well, that's, uh, yeah, what we're talking about there is asset smoothing.
Right.
That's, and what happened, and I'll, I'll go into, you know, part of it here, during COVID, plans had taken a serious hit on, uh, our investment, to the point of like two hundred and some thousand dollars we had dropped. And then what you, what we had to do at that point is what you call asset smoothing. This is Mockenhop's recommendation, and what you do is you take that, that loss and you spread it over a four-year period.
Right.
Okay? Now, also going forward, now to this day, we had recovered that loss plus made money. Again, we have to apply asset smoothing to that. You can't just, this, you know.
Well, what, wasn't there a quarter where we took in two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but we only paid asphalt thousand in one quarter? And then we made money that, that quarter?
That, well, yeah, but.
Something like that.
The way the year worked right now is that we've covered the loss and we made, uh, about a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars.
Right.
As of twenty twenty-four. So again, that comes down, we have to use asset smoothing for that, because we've elected that. If we would have taken the hit on a quarter of a million dollar loss.
Right.
It would have been a serious MMO catastrophe, spreading it over four years, evens it out, smoothes it out, and the impact isn't as bad.
I mean, during COVID, the market definitely went, it definitely trashed.
Yes.
But since then.
We gained.
It's doing pretty, pretty good. I don't, I, I, every guy could retire right now and, and, uh, we're not going to lose anything. Because they get one percent a year.
Yeah.
Not including you.
Yeah, right, but the thing.
Wouldn't you rather get two?
Absolutely. But what we're looking at here is the plan that we had in existence.
Right.
And a lot of it was just basic criteria has to be, had to be upgraded. Not mentioning, changing any aspects of the plan in regards to percentages or different methods of, you know, doing it. The basic plan being brought up is, is what this is.
I mean, I was actually looking, from what I saw on my email, I was looking at the thirty and out. The thirty years you could leave, the police do.
Yeah, and.
And they could leave at fifty-five.
And what?
These guys are going to work till they're sixty-five, and who's going to drag them out of the hole?
But under, understand this, what you're looking at when all the studies were done, only were on the valuation of twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Okay, the valuation of twenty twenty-three recognizes the loss. The next valuation that would be coming up is going to be twenty twenty-five. That shows the gain that we made as far as recovering the loss and a gain on top of that.
Right.
That's what you have to look at going forward to make any decision on that, because now we're looking at only a loss. Now we have to look at the gain.
I want to say it in front of everybody. If we changed that plan, that you could do thirty and out, or be sort of like the police, the uniformed.
Right.
Guys. Like, these guys could retire at a decent age.
No.
Instead of being like, uh, dinosaurs out there in the, in the snow, sixty-five years old. Do you want a sixty-five-year-old police officer chasing you? That's why they have the early outs for state police and police officers. Because a police officer at sixty-five is not going to chase you. He's going to shoot you.
If he could shoot you.
But that, that's what I was trying to do. I was trying to get them, and you, and Laurie.
Right.
That, because if you look at the savings, like, say they retire earlier, like, now you're not paying their salary, and then you hire somebody cheaper.
No, no, we're not, that, it's not even part of this. This is what we're, let's take it as steps. The first thing to do is to bring this up to where it should be, and then you do the evaluations of what you want to do.
Well, I think the employers should do the evaluations, including you.
No, no. What I'm talking about is we send it to Mockenhop and say, hey, do this based on the new valuation.
Well, why do we need an executive session for that?
Well, there are aspects. The way they wrote it, uh.
Well, why don't you just talk to the employees at the month meeting, because they canceled the meeting with the employees last week, have, uh, and let them express their thoughts, uh, about, because you're involved with it too.
Right. No, I understand that, but there is.
I'm just upset that this guy on Huntington Street has six hands. You're only supposed to have four.
You got to wait for him to die. You got to give him a chance to die or be eaten.
But, oh, why don't we forget about the executive session and, uh, because I think we just discussed pretty much what we wanted to discuss. And you discuss it with, with, um, with the employees, including yourself. You know what, what has to happen.
Well.
They know what they need.
I know, but you, I need councils to update, to approve this, update.
Well, do you want a motion right now without an executive session?
I still want an executive session if you have to sign out too.
You still want one? All right, make the motion for an executive session.
I made the motion for an executive session.
And the motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 If anybody opposed? Ayes have it. We're going into executive session. Sorry to worry.
You have, you, they could explain it later.
I'm sorry, what? It was only just one rape.
Yeah, I will. I will. I was just listening.
Service charge. That was it.
And what was the service charge? Was it like seven fifty? It raises a dollar forty a month?